Six thirty-one P M. I call the Independence Township Planning Commission meeting to order. And at this time, ask everyone to stand, face the flag for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Welcome to the Independence Township Planning Commission meeting. Copies of the agenda for tonight's meeting are available at the entrance to the room on my left. Agendas and meetings of prior, agendas and minutes of prior meetings are available on the township website. The meeting will be conducted in accordance with the agenda as presented or amended by the planning commission. State law establishes planning commissions. This planning commission is comprised of seven residents appointed to serve their community. Members are appointed by the supervisor and confirmed by the township board. Other individuals participating in the meeting this evening include representatives of the township's planning consultant, Carl Alwirtman Associates, the township's engineering consultant, Hubel Roth and Clark, the Kelly Firm, which is the city's contracted attorney, and Brittany Ellis is participating remotely tonight, and also Brian Ottman, who is the township planner. If you wish to address the planning commission, please come forward to the podium when recognized, provide your name and address on the sign-in sheet. Please begin your remarks by stating your name for the benefit of the commissioners. All remarks are to be addressed to the planning commission, not to anyone else in the room. If you have a cellphone, laptop, any other device that could potentially make noise and disrupt the meeting, please turn it off or put it on silent mode. And at this time, I ask the planning commission secretary to conduct a rule call.
Mr. Borsma.
Here.
Mr. Galley.
Here.
Mr. Lockren.
Here.
Mr. Patel.
Here.
Mr. Ritchie.
Here.
Chairman Savadon.
Here.
Ms. Tully here.
Thank you. We have a full board and a quorum, so we can conduct business this evening. Item D is the review of the agenda. We have an agenda before us for consideration. Does anyone have any suggested revisions, or can we consider a motion for approving the agenda as provided?
A motion that we approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
All in favor of approving the agenda as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing no one, that's seven to zero. The agenda is, that will be considered this evening, is the one that was presented. Next item is item E, public comment for items not on the agenda this evening. We'll start with those in the audience in person. Does anyone have any comments they'd like to make considering items that are not on tonight's agenda? Please.
Kyle Dysars, five-three-nine-six Aberdeen Court. If I could get a point of clarification for the chairman, are, is there going to be public comment on the regular business PC file two thousand and twenty-two zero-zero-six today?
It's not a public hearing. I wasn't planning on it, no.
Okay. In that case, I would like to talk about item number, PC file number two thousand and nineteen dash zero-zero-three. That was from last May's planning commission meeting. That, and I'm sure that most of my residents here today are going to talk about that issue as well. At that meeting, in that file number, this board conditionally approved bylaws for a phase two of Eagle Ridge subdivision. And part of that condition was that they needed to work with the township, just to remind everyone, to work with the township attorney and the newly formed HOA for phase one to reach a master agreement because there is a declaration of easement that was given from the developer of phase one to phase two, in which they need to contribute reasonable fees for the use of our road because there's no construction entrance. With that backdrop, I know that most of this board was here when we had last had this conversation, kind of combined with another item that is on the agenda tonight. Basically, going to the two thousand and nineteen file number, this board kind of took that, took that into consideration and decided to halt the agenda item that is on the agenda until myself, as the HOA president, our attorneys, as well as the township attorney, the supervisor, and the Clearview, and Clearview's attorney had a chance to meet. Since the last meeting, it took about a month or so to finally get a meeting on the books with all of us, and we had a, maybe about a two-hour discussion. From the, and keep in mind, this is only the second meeting that we have had since this file number appeared back in last May of two thousand and twenty-one. It was overall productive, but it was also long overdue because it was the initial conversation of many things that need to be talked about and negotiated because of all the issues that you guys heard about with our development at, back in the June meeting. Since then, there has not, I have a feeling that the, that later on tonight, that it's going to be communicated to you that the HOA is trying to hold this up. I can assure you that we're not, except for the fact that we are still waiting to talk about and negotiate and make substantial progress on PC file number two thousand and nineteen dash zero-zero-three from last May. We, while we had a productive conversation, there is a much larger picture of what has to happen with regards to the master association agreement that needs to be put in place per this board last May. We aren't making progress on it. We talked about specific, two little numbers that need to go into that overall agreement, but the overall structure of that agreement, there has been no subsequent conversations, no subsequent emails, no subsequent proposals. And I, on that, on that, in that meeting, I specifically laid out at least the HOA's recommended vision of what that master would look like. And it is contradictory to what was originally proposed by Clearview and their attorney. And so, here we are with two proposals, and yet, and frankly, I said at that meeting to everyone, I said, we need to have subsequent conversations and meetings to work through this. This is not a one-time, one-and-done thing. Not a single phone call, not a single email in the last three months. Nothing. Now, they may have been waiting on two, again, small pieces, which are numbers that we have to negotiate. And so, you guys are clear, because I want to make the record clear. Those two pieces of, those two pieces of information are the potential for a contribution from each of the new homes that would go toward future road maintenance, because they're using our roads over the next however many years to build phases two through five. And a separate number, which is until a master kicks into place, the number that HOA two is going to contribute to our HOA for all the expenses the first fifty-some homes pay for all electricity in the front entrance, the light, snow removal, everything that should be shared with every house in the back. That's two numbers. That's it. That's all they've, to me, those are, again, two pieces of a major puzzle, and we haven't even gotten a major puzzle put in place yet. And so, we're not holding this up. Now, first off, I find it surprising that myself, the one who's not getting paid to do any of this, mind you, was put in charge of trying to figure out what it would cost ten years from now for a future road replacement and come up with a number. That's fine. I said I will look into that, but that takes time. That's also difficult, especially when I'm trying to work with the current developer, the developer of phase one, who we also have many, many issues with, and his contractor that put that road in. With regards to the master, that, it seemed to me, from that conversation, that even Clearview's attorney was not necessarily on board with the proposal that we had given, which is very easy, that there is a master association that needs to be created now. The documents, the legal documents have to be created now. Why? Because we are talking about a potential for future road maintenance, and we need to be able to have money contributed from both HOAs into that master's legal entity name in an escrow account. Clearview's position was, nope, you can deal with that when HOA two takes over three years down the road. And that's not our position. We want the master created now so that there is not problems when phases three and four and five all roll in. They can't come along and be in the same situation that we're in, which frankly was created because this commission decided back in May to allow them to go forward without first having this master agreement in place. So, we want to nip this in the bud now before dealing with more of their phases, dealing with the same issue down the road. But to have a master association in place that once HOA two is triggered by the homeowners, both then HOA one and HOA two will funnel into the master, and the master kicks in over both of those phases. And then, as phase three rolls in, it'll be the same thing. Phase three will contribute to the master on an annual basis for the common element maintenance. And then, once phase three, or if there's going to be other homeowner associations, we're not sure. But whatever that is the case, they will then eventually roll into this master. That is not what Clearview's current proposal is for this master agreement. And again, we've had almost zero, besides this meeting, conversations with regards to the details of that. Why? I don't know. It seems that no one has an interest in trying to get this master agreement in place. And Frankie's not here, but, so I don't, but, you know, the city attorney's office was charged with this, and I'm not getting any emails from them or direction or any kind of facilitation with regards to getting the parties to a table and getting something worked out. And I haven't seen anything from Clearview and their attorney telling us, hey, get based on our conversations, okay, how about this? Nothing. So, with that, I think this, this commission has already heard the absurd amount of wrongs that have been done in this development. We need this in place. It is wrong for Clearview, Clearview and this board, our fellow residents, to be continuing to put us in this position and risking this just because you want to push a development through. It's not right. It's very easy, hold their feet to the fire, and I'm not even talking about numbers. I think last time, we kind of got hung up on maybe we're at one number and one number really far apart, and we have to negotiate. Yes, we have to negotiate on those numbers, and those negotiations have started. But the numbers, again, are two pieces of the entire big puzzle. And the big puzzle has not been negotiated, has not been worked through, and there isn't even anything in writing that shows that. Nothing, besides the first proposal, which we reject and will not sign on to. We can't. It doesn't make any sense for various reasons, and we explain them to Clearview and their attorney via phone. So, with that, I, all I can say is I think that this commission and the township has already, over the last year, drastically failed with this development for its own residents. And so, I'm asking you to try to somewhat correct the situation right now and get the parties to the table before you continue to stamp approval on things in this development without the very thing that you told everyone had to be in place last May. It hasn't happened, not even close. In fact, I think the word that Commissioner Ritchie used in his motion, even though it wasn't in the minutes, was that there needs to be substantial progress coming out of that meeting. I can tell you, we're not even close to substantial. Not even close. We've had a first conversation. It's like a first date, frankly, of a relationship. I mean, that's where we are in working through some of these things. So, with that, that, I just wanted to make sure that since there is no public hearing on that other item, that you are aware for this PC file number and the status of the master agreement with our development. Again, I'd ask you, please, with the other issues going on, do what you need to do to get them to the table, please, because if you don't, let me put it this way. You adjourned the last agenda item, three months have went by and nothing happened. And that's with you holding back the project. Imagine if you push it through. So, with that, I'm sure my, there's other people here from the neighborhood that want to talk about this PC file number two thousand and nineteen zero-zero-three. Thank you.
Any other question, any other comments on items not, not on tonight's agenda? Is it related to item G one on the agenda? Item G one is PC file number twenty, twenty-two dash zero-zero-six, petitioner Clearview Homes.
No, it is not.
Come on up.
Hey, y'all. Good evening. My name is Rudy Gonzalez. I'm the resident of five-four-one-one Morgan Lake Drive, and I just came here to express my concerns with the lack of good faith negotiations between Clearview and our HOA board.
I'm going to cut you off right there.
Sure thing.
I'm going to cut you off right there.
Yes.
That's clearly related to PC file number two thousand and twenty-two dash zero-zero-six.
This is for items not on the agenda, and this item is on the agenda. It very clearly is. Okay. I apologize for miss, for not catching that.
I thought it was very clear with my question, so.
Okay.
Do you have, do you have any comments on items that are not on tonight's agenda?
No. Thank you.
Well, not necessarily. I want to be clear here. We had a public hearing on this item a few months ago. Everyone who attended the meeting in person or electronically were provided with an opportunity to speak. There were no time limits, no restrictions on length of time. The public hearing was opened, was closed. Many people spoke. We listened to every word. Nothing has changed in this application. So, I don't think it's a, it's a effective and efficient use of everyone's time to open up another public hearing, which is not required by law, and hear the same comments from the same people. I think it's, I think it's counterproductive. I don't think it helps anybody. Now, I wasn't planning on having, on opening a public hearing. If, if a majority of, if someone wants to make a motion and is seconded, and there's a majority vote, we'll have another public hearing. Sounds fun, but I'm not going to do it. So, let's, let's, let's address this now. Do I have a motion and a second to open another public hearing on an item that we've already held a public hearing on and heard every comment that possibly could have been made? Anyone want to make a motion?
No.
No? Okay. The HOA president spoke very articulately, very, did a thorough job. I, I, I'm not going to open another public hearing.
All right. Well, thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate everyone. This is a public meeting. Everyone can attend in person, remotely. It's open to the public. The agenda was provided to people ahead of time. Again, nothing's changed. There's not, there's no, there's no end around here. There's no end game. I'm not trying to quash anyone's opportunity, but, but sir, you spoke at the last public hearing.
Yes, I did.
At length, very articulately. I think I made a comment about your indoor voice or your outdoor voice, if I recall. I remember. I remember everything you said. I remember every comment that was made. I'm not trying to curtail input, but we've already done this dance. Fair?
Yes.
Thank you. Does anyone have any comments on an item that is not on tonight's agenda? Anyone participating online have any comments that are not related to an item not on tonight's agenda? Hearing no one, we move on. Item F is public hearings. Again, there are no public hearings this evening. Item G one, PC file number two thousand and twenty-two dash zero-zero-six, petitioner Clearview Homes LLC. The site is located on the east side of Mavy Road, north of Morgan Lake Drive, parcel number zero-eight-three-six-two-zero-one-zero-six. Presently is owned PRD, planned residential development. The petitioner Clearview Homes is requesting an amended planned residential development with the addition of a four-point-seven-nine acre and the approval of an amendment to phase two of the development, and this was postponed from June sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Mr. Carlisle, do you have a presentation, please?
Very briefly. There were just, excuse me, good evening, everyone. There were just a few comments from our previous review that we raised, and I think Mr. Longhurst also had some similar comments. One of the things that we had asked for was a clearer means and methodology for, to ensure that the preservation of the wetlands were ensured. And we have, I have read the letter from the Morgan Lake homeowners group. While the, you know, while the specific approach differs from what the Morgan Lake Homeowners Association is suggesting, we have received language that will protect the, will provide protection for those wetlands and provide for non-encroachment. I believe you've received a copy of what, what is going to go into the master deed and bylaws. So, there's really two things at play here. Whether it is preserved as a whole by the association or it is, remains in the ownership of private property owners, the language in here is restrictive. I think the, the, the approach of having it still owned by property owners actually brings two levels of protection in. One, it puts the homeowners association in a position of responsibility for a violation of something that's in the master deed and bylaws. And second of all, then it brings the township in if there is a violation of our wetlands ordinance. So, I frankly think that you could look at it either way, but I think that the approach that's being proposed is effective. The second issue that the homeowners association mentioned was the same restrictions should be, apply in the overall PRD, PRD to this, this new amendment. That, that goes without saying. They are still subject to the same PRD permit conditions as the, as the original PRD, you know, the, the PRD permit conditions approved. So, there's no need for us to do anything more about that in particular. Both Jason and I did ask for clarification on the access road. I think we got additional information. I think, Jason, you did ask for still a little bit more, but that can be handled in the construction plan stage. But there was additional detail provided there. The, and the only other thing, I had two comments about methodology of tree protection. I did get a response indicating that perhaps there was something on the plans that I missed. I did go back and through that, and I didn't necessarily see that. But again, you know, that, that's a construction plan approach that we can follow to make sure that those trees that they say are going to be preserved are preserved. And it's usually just a, it's a, it's a protective fencing and that kind of thing during construction is what we asked for. And I think the second thing was, we asked for a, a revision in the detention basin mix to a, to a more native seed planting, and they've done that. The only other issue is that they, is the issue, and maybe Jason needs to speak or will speak more to this, but I, I can't because he pointed it out to me, is that their sedimentation does outlet into the, into Morgan Lake and may well require an Eagle permit. They, they know that, and they've had experience with this before, and they've indicated that, that they have, in, in, in different situations, they haven't been, if, if they follow a certain methodology, they don't even require a permit, but that remains to be seen. If it does require a permit from Eagle, it will require a permit from the township. So, once that determination is made by Eagle, if it, if it does require an Eagle permit, it will require a township wetland permit also. So, those are the, the only items that I had left.
Any questions for Mr. Carlisle? Mr. Longhurst, anything to add?
No, I think Mr. Carlisle covered the, the main issue was the methodology for their stormwater management, that additional permits may be required. I'd be happy to answer questions if there are any. Otherwise, the bulk of our letter is really pointing out items that we're going to be looking for as they move forward with the construction drawings.
Thank you. Ms. Ellis, anything to add?
Yes. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Great. I would just add that we do have correspondence from Clearview repeatedly reaching out to the HOA's council, Linnell and Associates, following that July eighth meeting. We have not heard back from their attorneys, and our office is not empowered to reach out to a party that's represented by an attorney. So, that sets forth my letter, which includes all the correspondence between both parties to date. I really have nothing else to add. The master deed does include that requirement, which we discussed, for Clearview to negotiate in good faith to get a master agreement in place with the phase one HOA. However, I have no basis to recommend denial of the development on that basis in that Clearview's attorney has repeatedly, based on emails between, provided to me, tried to reach out to Linnell and Associates to get this resolved. I myself have placed phone calls to Linnell and Associates, and I have not received a response back. So, I really have no update on the negotiation between the parties other than Clearview did circulate a proposed agreement, and we, the last correspondence we have from the HOA's attorneys is on August first, two thousand and twenty-one, or, I'm sorry, two thousand and twenty-two, stating he would get back to us that day, and we never heard back again. So, that, that's all I have to add.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for any of the three people who just spoke on representing the township? Would the applicant, do you have anything to add to this?
Not really. If, I mean, I'm more than happy to get into the minutia if we really want to. I don't feel we need to. If there's any questions, I'm more than happy to answer.
Does anyone have any questions for the applicant related to the project, or the minutia for that matter?
Just one comment about the discharge. You know, we're going to handle that administratively, but are we going to see the design and, and the approval, I guess, before? but are we going to see the design and the approval, I guess, before they start construction, correct?
Well, if it does, you requiring the discharge, if it does require, if it does require a wetland permit, you will be seeing it.
Well, I guess I'm going to, I mean, there must be some process that's going to take place administratively to make sure it meets the requirements before they start digging in.
Of course. Jason, maybe you could speak a little bit more to that.
Yeah, obviously, they need to get a little further along with their design. We will require them to get documentation from WRC or Eagle or to confirm if they have jurisdiction over the project and if a permit is required or not. And then we can report back to Mr. Carlisle and to Mr. Hoffman there as to what the verdict was.
But it will require, I mean, there'll be additional detail required in the construction plans that Mr. Regis asked for. You're asking that.
Right. I'm just saying, that's part of how it's going to be handled administratively.
Correct. That will be reviewed by the Township Engineers Office.
Okay.
There was a memo that was provided to us in our packet from North Morgan Lake Association, just clarifying that for the record, that we did receive it.
Mr. and Mr. Stubb, that was what I was referring to, sort of briefly, but the fact is, I believe that what they were requesting in one fashion or another has been, has been provided. Although the exact approach to the wetland preservation is not specifically the way that they wanted it, the language to go into the master deed and laws is also an effective way to deal with it. And they also requested that they have to comply with all the other PRD requirements. Well, that goes without saying. They already have to do that.
If this application were to move forward as requested this evening, they will, the applicant will be required by law to create a master deed, correct?
Correct.
That's typically done prior to final engineering approval, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah. Sir, are we allowed to speak about things that are in here, or is this like?
You're referring to the memo created, prepared by the Kelly firm dated September 1st?
Yes, sir.
I would defer to Ms. Ellis on that matter.
I just had a question about the timeline.
It's ultimately up to the Planning Commission if they want to disclose any of the legal information set forth therein. I've already basically summarized my letter, so I have no issue if the commission wants to discuss the timeline.
There you go. Well, I just had a question. Why there wasn't any response from the homeowners? This Richard Lenell, is he a resident of this development, or is he somebody?
He is not.
Okay.
He is their independent attorney.
So, we have this series of emails from Lenell to the developer's attorney, and it's like July 25th, July 26th, 27th, August 1st, and then like, I just wondered why there wasn't a response from the lawyer of the homeowners association. And perhaps he was on vacation during that week or something like that.
We are wondering the same thing and hoping for some clarification because from the township's perspective, we want this agreement to be in place. And the HOA has represented that they want to get moving on it as well. So, maybe they can provide some clarity to my office with regard to why they're not received, why Clearview nor my office has received any response since August 1st.
That was my question.
So, I'm trying to play catch up. I wasn't here at the last meeting. I know we've seen a lot with this development over the years. Can you just clarify for me, Brian or Dick? So, this is an amendment to the Phase 2, so they have approval. Is this for, how many additional lots would this be for what we're approving tonight? Can you just kind of go into details? Since I wasn't here, I've gone through the minutes, but I'd like to catch up as much as I can.
This is an additional 24 lots in this phase, but there were previously 15. 15, I think, in the original plan.
Okay. Is this additional?
But they have purchased additional property too.
Okay. That answers. Appreciate it.
Any questions for Mr. Longhurst, Mr. Carlisle, Ms. Ellis? Thoughts?
I have one more question. Go for it. I was just wondering, from Clearview Homes, in that one letter we got from Rachel there earlier, that must have been in May, she was talking about like a promise for access to Morgan Lake. But now there's all homes along there, but is there still an access for homeowners still provided?
Yeah, I guess. I'll try to answer, but not sure I even understand the question. Who's Rachel?
It was one of the homeowners that submitted a letter. We had a letter from her on how there were, it's supposed to be like perhaps a boardwalk and access for all the homeowners in all the phases, but that since the new property was acquired, there wasn't any.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure what you're talking about. There was some residents that live on Roar Road that had spoke last meeting, and we've corresponded with since, that had made the claim that they had a deeded access to the lake. We had our title company pull title and verified there's no deeded access to our property. Best we could figure out, it appears there was an old deeded access on other property unrelated to ours that at one point was split off and looks like it removed their actual access. That's the best we could tell. Really has nothing to do with us or our property, and we provided all that information to that homeowner.
Well, in the June package on the map that we got, there was shown just, I'll say to the left, I don't know what direction that is, of the, of the property that's trying to be added. It says there's a path.
There's a common area. Yes, that's still there. That exists. That's unrelated to what I was just speaking about. So, again, not exactly who Rachel is, but if we're talking about the homeowner that lives on Roar Road, that's.
No, it was somebody that's in the Phase 1, I think.
But was that your question? There still will be public access?
Yeah, I just thought there was, I just thought there was some kind of deal where instead of all these lots developed, there was one lot that was supposed to be.
There was in the, in the current Phase 2, there's a common area that adjoins to the lake. And in the new proposed Phase 2, I think it's called 2B, there's also a common area that adjoins to it, touches it. That hasn't been removed. It still exists. That's still there.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Can I ask a quick question? So, you're saying that the homes on Roar, there's like.
Whoa, 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 hold on. So, it's not a public hearing?
Okay, got it.
Mr. Carlisle?
If I could, this issue, I mean, there is internal access, foot traffic only within the development that was part, that was approved as the overall PRD and was included in Phase 1. This issue of potentially of either Roar Road or other residents outside of this development, having access through this property is not a new issue. We have asked for and never received any evidence that there is any access easement. To our knowledge, there is no recorded access easement. It's probably one of these things that's been passed down over the years of people using a certain pathway or a certain access way, but we have never seen any record and never been provided with any evidence of this claim that there is another point of access for people outside of this property other than what they may already have, but through this property to Morgan Lake. That issue has been presented for since this development was proposed in 1999. And to this date, no evidence has ever been presented that it exists. So, I don't.
But there is access to homeowners, right?
Within the development.
In the development, correct.
This is a separate, a separate claim that there may, that there is this access from people owning property outside of this Morgan Lake property to have access through this property to Morgan Lake. And there's never been any evidence presented that indicates there's any easement of that nature at all.
But Phase 1, there is access to the lake?
Correct.
And this area that's now, what I'm guessing is this additional area that's being part of the amendment, is the portion on the lake?
Yes.
And was that, what was that in the original PRD? Was that part of the PRD? Was that shown as open space? Or access or anything? What was it previously planned for?
Yes, it was, but as, as the representative Clearview indicated, they are, when they bought this additional property, they've slightly added to that, that area of access, but that's, that's it. It exists. Is that what you're asking?
No, I'm asking previously on the PRD, what did this area where they've got the 14 lots, whatever it is on the backing onto the lake, what was that previously in the PRD?
It was, they were, it was shown as lots.
Oh, it was, okay.
Yeah, it was always plotted as one.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, it was lots, and yet the property they purchased did, you know, claimed to have, and this is a whole separate issue, claimed to have an access easement to Roar Road.
I understand. I'm asking a separate question of that.
Okay. So, when they acquired that property, that potentially, that got rid of that, that encumbrance on the property, which now is what has allowed them to rearrange this property to see what you had, so that you have what you have now.
Questions, comments? So, just a reminder that the matter before us this evening is an amended planned residential development with the addition of a 4.79 acre parcel and the approval of an amendment to Phase 2 of the development.
The action would be a recommending to the board, correct? Because it's a PRD. Recommendation, correct?
Yes, because the amendment needs to be approved by the board. That's correct.
I guess my comments would be they satisfied the, you know, kind of the bookkeeping requirements from the last meeting. I understand the master association still overhangs everything, but that's, that's a two-party thing. I think the worst thing we could do is delay the developer forever, cause more financial harm to them. In turn, causes more financial harm to all the homeowners and in turn, the association. That doesn't get anybody anywhere. The, I heard the words from the gentleman that spoke where he said, oh, well, they presented us a master plan, and we said, we said, no, that's no good for us. Well, I get it. They might not like what Clearview presented, but then they can present what they would accept back, and it doesn't look like that happened. So, to negotiate, you have to have two parties. It can't just be all one party. We want this, and we want this, and we don't want anything you want. So, I guess I would recommend moving forward, in my opinion. That's it.
I think there's a dichotomy here because I heard the residents. I feel for the residents. I want their issues addressed. I hope they're addressed. But I think the path forward is not to delay this project. I think the path forward is to move this project along based on the fact that it has met the requirements of the zoning ordinance and other requirements so that the developer can move forward, and the revenue generated for this will help alleviate the problems that we've got in Phase 1. I think everyone on this board wants the same thing. We want both parties successful so that all the issues we heard a few months ago can be addressed.
Okay, one thing, if you're finished. I wanted to mention too, I did drive through there last night on my way back from Fabulous Home Depot. Yes, there are a few issues on the roads. Keep in mind, the roads are 23 years old, 24 years old somewhere in there. They were put in 1999, 1998, somewhere in there. In the sub I live in, we have 23-year-old roads, and we're replacing them all. Our subdivision is full. There's no more development going on, but it's Michigan. Roads don't last. Now, sure, there is undue traffic being put on it by the developer, and that's part of the negotiations. I get it. But my overall view of the development, when I drove through there last night, it looked like a pretty clean, kept ship. Understanding it hasn't rained a lot this summer, so there's not a lot of mud in the streets and whatnot. I'm sure it's looked worse on occasion. But just one man on the board's opinion, it looked like it was a decently kept new development, in my opinion. That's it.
So, admittedly, I'm, you know, I wasn't here last meeting, so I didn't hear all the residents. I did read the minutes. I think I've got a pretty understanding of what's going on. I have to admit, I'm really frustrated. Two years ago, for some reason, we saw the master deed for the Phase 2, and I asked at the time, why are we looking at this? And I knew that that was going to be a problem down the road. We shouldn't have moved forward with that at that time. We should have made sure that there was a connection between the HOA and the developer. So, you know, this is two years in the making, and frankly, I think we just kicked down, you know, kicked the can down the road then. I do see that the developer tried to reach out. I'm at a loss why the HOA's attorney did not respond. I mean, frankly, everything I was reading, I was really on the side of the HOA, and then I see that you've gone dark. And I think all of us have that same feeling, what's going on? So, my concern on this is really comes down to leverage. It's one party's leverage over the other. Approving it tonight changes the leverage to some degree. I'm not, you know, comfortable with changing that, but at the same time, I don't want this going on forever. So, I would like to see if there's a way, and maybe the developer can come up with some kind of solution where maybe there's some kind of timeline or milestone where this does get resolved, but we're still kicking the can down the road. So, my concern, it has to happen. There has to be a master of some sort, either combined association. I've done this in a number of communities, so I understand it very well. But at a minimum, there has to be some coordination with a master, some type of master association. So, I'm concerned about it. I'm concerned that it's going to go on forever. I don't think it's fair to have the developer sit around for the attorney to get back to them, so that is a, that's a concern of mine. But I also don't want to just release this and expect that everything is going to be all right, because two years ago, we did that, and here we are. So, I don't have any other thoughts on that. I'd like to get everybody else's consideration on that. I think just approving this and pretending that it's all going to happen is, that might be a foolish game. But I also don't want to hold on forever, and the developer has made overture. So, those are my thoughts. It's a little different than maybe some of you have, but I did see this two years ago, and I'm kind of frustrated with that. I think I voted against it. I think I was the only one, to be honest. So, I'd like everybody's thoughts on that.
I guess my thoughts are the same as Mr. Galley in a way that I think by moving forward, at least some activity, and the more, I guess, by moving forward, at least there's money being put into the subdivision, and hopefully the, you know, the parties can come to an agreement. But to let us sit there idle with nothing is, to me, nobody wins in that situation, so I'm in favor of moving on.
Yeah, and just to add, I'll let you speak when I'm, so I agree. It's like, you know, leverage. So, you look at the roles of the Planning Commission, you know, updating the master plan, reviewing site plan, site plans, you know, negotiating PEDs, you know, providing leverage is not one of our functions. Now, I'm not naive. I know how this works. But we postponed this already once to get the parties at the table. They weren't able to come up with something that both parties were supportive of. That's unfortunate. We did provide a few months, though. But a reminder, we're a recommending body, not an approval body. I don't think, it's going to annoy people if this moves forward this evening, but I think we have to, I think the path forward for both sides is start moving forward and start generating some money so that some of these things can be approved. I agree with you. I'm frustrated as well. This is really unique for me. I've never been involved in something like this before. It's really frustrating. I can't imagine. I can't imagine the residents, and, and the developer is in a tough spot too. This, this sucks, this whole thing sucks. But I, but I think that doing nothing is worse than, than this moving forward, in my opinion. Go ahead.
I was just going to say that it has been three months hoping that the two parties would get together and nothing has happened. So, we also discussed last time about the need for Clearview to continue to make money so that there were money to handle the issues. But, I mean, I can't see more time going by and nothing happening. There seems to be no plan, you know, for the parties to come together.
Ms. Borsma, anything to add?
I think Brittany summed it up pretty well. You can't come to an agreement when only one party is reaching out. It sounds like the HOA's attorney needs to respond so that some progress can be made. And I also don't believe that the developer should be delayed. Because if he's delayed, he's going to lose money and then it'll end up like it was, an undone development. And I commend this developer for coming in and picking up something that was never finished. That's why your Phase One is in the, in the, in the shape it's in.
Yes, Mr. Carlisle, excuse me.
Just something that I want to make clear here is that because this master road agreement will be, in essence, part of the master deed and bylaws, it will also require approval from the township. You know, the problem is, is that we cannot unilaterally impose these conditions on two private parties. And until the two private parties come to an agreement, we will have no agreement to review. But I do want both parties to be aware that we will review the details of it and some of the concerns that were expressed about it not taking place or being imposed until another homeowners' association is brought into the fold. That's the mistake that was made in the first place, is to, for the association to have been formed and to have taken over Phase One without this being in place. We're not going to let that happen again. So, I want to make that clear. I, I will not recommend, you know, this agreement, you know, being kicked in, you know, being withheld in place until another homeowners' association is brought into play. That just makes no sense whatsoever. But by the same token, we can't force the two parties to come to an agreement that one or the other finds to be unreasonable. In the long run, it seems to make sense that the more people that use that road, ultimately, the problem is either going to get worse or it's going to get better. And it'll only get better if the master road agreement is in place.
Questions? Want to make sure everyone has an opportunity to share their opinions? Let's go. Alright.
Before we do that, is there any, is there any milestone, maybe I'm, I'm talking to Ms. Ellis, is there any milestone that we could legally, you know, tie the master agreement to? I'm thinking of a site improvement permit, something of that nature. Is that something that, that we could do as a, as a commission?
So, the problem with this development that has been a persistent problem is that the actual PUD was approved and Mr. Carlisle can, probably has the more accurate date, but I think it was about thirty years ago. So, that agreement did not require unified control, i.e. that there needed to be a master association. So, Q, Clearview purchasing part, our phases two through five, and I think it was 2020, there is no requirement to enter into this master agreement. What we did was we put, we didn't feel we had a legal basis at that time to force Clearview to enter into that agreement, but we strongly recommended it, which is why we included the language in the master deed for Phase Two requiring them to negotiate in good faith. So, in sum, my answer is no, we can't force these private parties to enter into an agreement. However, I still, we should still strongly encourage them to move towards entering into it. It's beneficial for both parties as they are sharing common elements together between the developments. But no, there's, in my opinion, with the PUD as written and approved thirty years ago, we don't have the authority to force Clearview to enter into that, into that agreement. And, you know, if, if the HOA does come to the table and they are negotiating, I think it would be reasonable for the planning commission to say, you know, until you have an agreement in place, we're gonna, we'll postpone future approvals since you're moving towards it. But I'm uncomfortable saying that yes, the, the township can hold them up indefinitely unless we see real progress being made by both parties.
Dick, do you have any thoughts of that? Dick?
Well, I mean, this still has to go to the township board. So, there's going to be another bite at the apple and perhaps that, that, that mere fact will again bring, you know, I'm not going to pass judgment here, but we've had our township attorney say that they have not received communication from the HOA attorney. Perhaps that message will get across tonight and now the negotiations will begin in earnest once again. But it's, I think it still has to go before the township board. You're making a recommendation. All you can do is encourage us to, you know, to, to be, you know, to be pursued, I think. I think, I think your township attorney has told you that we can't hold this thing up indefinitely.
And, and we, we talk about leverage, here we go again. We're a recommending body and not an approval body. So, they haven't got approval yet, even if we, even if we take an, an action this evening to recommend approval, they still have to go before the township board, which I believe that's going to be a public hearing, correct, Ms. Robson?
Yeah.
No, okay. But it will be a public meeting. So, there's an opportunity for the residents to participate. So, it's, it's still, they still don't have approvals after this evening, even if we do move forward with the recommendation and approval. Again, I, I think it's, I think doing nothing is worse than moving, than making a recommendation, because I think the path forward is, is for this project to move forward. That's going to benefit all parties, in my opinion. I'm not an expert on this. This is a really unique situation. Yeah?
Mr. Solomon?
Yeah.
This is unique because it started nineteen ninety-nine by a previous.
Yes.
About fifth removed.
Yeah.
You know, Clearview is now, at least, let me think. Seaman, this is probably, they are now at least the fifth developer of the property.
There's so many unique things. You know, usually, ideally, Phase One is fully, fully completed, Phase Two is fully completed. Face, you know, it, it moves along, you know, consistently and relatively quickly so that this isn't just out there for decades. And then we've got a HOA that's left kind of holding the bag. And then another developer that's going to come along after the fact and try to clear up someone else's mess. And it's just, I, I, I under, I, I empathize. I empathize with, with the residents, I really do.
But it doesn't seem that it benefits anyone to do nothing.
Right.
No.
I agree. It seems counterintuitive, but also depending on what, how you look at it. You know, some residents thinking that we're giving up the farm by making a recommendation, that, that may, but I, I stand by my belief that doing nothing is worse than moving this forward. So. Someone want to make a move forward motion? I'll move on. PC file twenty-two zero zero six, petitioner Clearview Homes on parcel number zero eight dash three six dash two oh one dash zero zero six. That we moved to recommend approval of the amended planned residential development with the addition of four point seven nine acres and the approval of the amendment to Phase Two of the development as presented.
I'll support the motion.
We have a motion in a, in a second. I'd like to ask Mr. Carlisle or Ms. Ellis a question. Mr. Carlisle, you referenced the, the comments from the North Morgan Lake Association. Do we need to specifically call, reference those suggestions in the motion?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay.
Because I believe that our recommendations are consistent.
Thank you.
Will these go to the board?
Pardon me?
These will go in the board packet, so.
Right.
The comments.
Okay. Further questions, discussion? Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Borsma?
Yes.
Mr. Galli?
Yes.
Mr. Lachrin?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Chairman Savadat?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
So, for those in the audience who are watching at home, this is a recommendation only and the next step will be reviewed by the township board at a public meeting. Agendas are available on the township website, so keep an eye open on, on the website. You'll be able to identify what meeting they'll be on and you can participate. Everyone who attended this evening remotely or in person, thank you. Thank you for your time and, again, I empathize. Next item. G two. PC file number two thousand twenty-two dash zero zero eight. This is a zoning ordinance text amendment regarding revisions to section eleven point zero six lake access regulations. And this is returned from the township board for further consideration by the planning commission. Who's going to summarize this? Ms. Ellis?
I'm happy to do so.
Thank you.
Yes, so this is back in front of you again. Basically, the board reviewed the ordinance and they saw that the planning commission had recommended approval subject to the ordinance allowing the planning commission to approve up to the two boats per a hundred feet. The language that was added and presented to the board granted the, the planning commission the discretion to grant more than one boat per a hundred feet of shoreline up to two boats. While, and it placed the burden on the applicant to justify approval for the up to two boats. While this, the, the board basically wanted to know if this language accomplished what the planning commission was looking to accomplish or if the planning commission's recommendation was essentially to revert back to the original language of the ordinance, which I've included in my letter to the board. To effectuate that, I provided two motions for the commission's review. The first sets, if passed, would set the intent of the PC as being to retain the original language of this ordinance. The second would approve the language as presented to the board of trustees last week. So, in sum, the board's looking for clarification.
Thank you. Mr. Ritchie?
Yeah, I guess I'll take the blame for part of this for coming back, because when it came to the board of trustees, since I'm the liaison between the board and the planning commission, I felt that the motion, or the, the information that was brought to the board of trustees wasn't particularly exact of what we said at the planning commission meeting. I left the meeting under the impression that we, we were, the motion said two boats per one hundred feet. Not one boat with the discretion of another one being approved by the planning commission. So, it's, it's basically the wording that I objected to and then the board said, okay, we'll send it back to the planning commission to make sure it's what we said we wanted it to be, so. Like I said, I'm not trying to push the two boats per hundred. I'm just saying that I guess I objected at the board of trustees meeting because I didn't think it was accurate for what we made the motion out of that day.
Okay.
So, I, you know, to me, we just need to clarify that what we want it to be before we send it forward, so.
Again. Who wants to go first?
I guess I'll bring it up back.
Yeah.
I've had a conversation with a, a few of the residents on, on Deer Lake and they, you know, obviously they want it to be as minimal boats as possible. You know, they'd be happy with zero.
Mm-hmm.
And they definitely think one with the discretion of getting the second one is a better move than two, two boats per a hundred. And, you know, obviously, safety concerns and, you know, lake quality, you know, the environmental impact of more boats and everything is, you know, is high in their expectation as well. There was a number of, quite a bit of our conversation, had to deal with whether, you know, these are like marinas or not. You know, the definition, I guess I'm not a lawyer, I wasn't trying to debate that. So, I told them I wasn't going to agree that it was a marina. Basically, you know, if they have a hundred foot of frontage, they get a, a dock and, and two boats or a dock and one boat plus option of a second boat for every hundred foot, so. And that's, but the residents, you know, they, they felt that, you know, they should, you know, apply to whatever the state requirements are, the legal laws, where the Eagle requires it to have a permit or whatever. I know this has been discussed a couple of times, whether that should be part of our ordinance or not. Obviously, you know, we don't want to put something in there that makes the township have to defend itself for things that we're not in control of, so that's, that's a sticking point as well, so. Obviously, you want to protect the residents, we want to do what's right, but, you know, we want to do it in the most efficient and legal manner as well, so. So, there again, I think this whole ordinance has to deal with, I don't know if you want to call them outlots or now repairing lots, it's basically multifamily homes with frontage on the lake, so. Doesn't affect the, the standard single homeowner of the property, of the lake.
Thank you. I, I wasn't at, I didn't attend the township board meeting and I didn't watch it, so I'm just going off of, you know, my, my memory of the meeting and, because I, I seconded the motion. It was made by Mr. Lachrin. And I thought it was, I think it's really clear. My opinion's very clear. And second of all, we're a recommending body and the township board can go along with our recommendation or they can choose to ignore it or they can modify it. Take it what they want.
Here again, I guess the wording that was sent to the township board was basically one boat per, one boat, one dock per a hundred feet with the discretion of the board, the planning commission to allow a second boat as long as the, you know, whatever the legal wording was as far as how, you know, they prove, prove their story that why they need a second boat, so.
That's not, I recall we discussed it, we said two boats.
Right, well, that's, I guess, because of the wording, it's basically, the way that was wording to the board of trustees kind of could still accomplish the same thing, but it wasn't what we recommended. To me, we recommended two boats per a hundred, so I, I objected at the board of trustees and that's why it's back, so.
Okay. Do you want to take another stab at restating the same thing?
I'm not sure. I guess my thought is, it's a special land use permit, so we have discretion as a planning commission. That was my whole point. I don't know why we're limiting ourselves. Why are we taking something where we have purview and now we're making, we're limiting ourselves as a body? That was my, my only purpose of this. It's not like it's an automatic approval for two boats. They have to go through a whole special land use process, they've got to go through the rig and roll and to get the two boats for a hundred, there was some additional, I believe there was some additional requirements. So, I thought we were pretty clear in that, so I'm not, I'm not sure what, I'm kind of confused on what the question is, to be honest, because I think, you know, when we said we were just changing that one, that one provision to be one per fifty rather than one per hundred. So, again, I just don't want to limit our, our powers as a, as a planning commission. We seem to be self-limiting ourselves and I'm, I'm not quite sure why we're doing that.
So, if you have a fishing boat, you would have to get permission from the planning commission to add a raft. It's probably not called a raft.
No. Is it just motorized?
This is not for single family.
Yeah, motorized. Well, they have a motorized, pontoon boat, sorry.
Pontoon boat. Okay.
It depends. If it's, if you buy a existing single-family lot on the lake, you can have three boats if you want.
Right.
This is for a development that keyholes in and gets access to, to the lake. This is for a one hundred unit development, for example.
Or it would be for any vacant lot on the lake in the township, correct?
Right. Correct.
Which all his neighbors can have five boats and he can only have one.
I think the numbers we're talking about here are one per fifty, one per hundred, I think the difference we decided that was reasonable.
Yeah, I, I don't wanna die in this hill, but at the same time, I, I'm, it's more, it's, it's more global than what we're talking about. It's just, for some reason, all of a sudden, we're, we're asked to limit ourselves, that's, that's my only point. I didn't think that that was, I didn't think that made sense to me. Does it mean that much to me? Not necessarily, so it's, it's more, it's more what we're doing to our, our board. If that makes sense.
What's the purview of the board? What's the, what's the purview of the board on this?
So are you asking, Mr. Commissioner or Mr. Chair, are you asking what the planning commission is being asked to approve tonight?
No, I was asking the board what they wanna do.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
I think one per fifty is reasonable.
So do I.
And if you start getting into larger numbers, then it's a marina, it's required to be permitted by the state anyway.
If it doesn't make sense, we're not gonna approve it, I mean, I, that, that's how I, that's how I've always seen this.
Well, I think the difference in the one per fifty and one per hundred was it's, was one dock and up to two boats per hundred. Are, are we doing one boat, one dock per fifty, so that means you could have twice as many docks?
Oh, I didn't realize that, I didn't understand that.
I mean, to me, that's the difference between the, the wording of those two, one per fifty or one per hundred. Or, yeah, 'cause one per hundred is, it's one dock, one boat, plus option of a second boat.
So one per fifty, and if a hundred, addition of another boat, not another dock. I think that's what our intent was.
I didn't say that.
The, the, the dialogue sticking into this just confused me.
Does it talk about docks?
Yeah, 'cause have you seen how people do docks?
It's just number of boats.
They made some pretty creative formations and exits and entries, and H formations and
I know.
multiple lifts. Covers.
Again, I don't wanna.
I didn't know this was about docks.
Well, yeah, has to do with the number of docks as all the boats, one, this is one, it was one dock and two boats.
It's a dock in the language.
It talks about that, so.
Can we have, can we have the attorney read both versions? Is that, it should be somewhere, and I don't know where it is.
Yeah, there's too many crossouts and clues, if anything else, I'd get lost.
It, uh, Mr. Hatman, uh, in, uh, in, uh, Exhibit B.
There's multiple ways of how this is.
That's the actual version, it's highlighted in red.
My question is one on procedure, like it says, an applicant may propose up to two boats. So how would that propose, does that come before the planning commission then, when they propose?
Which provision specifically are you setting out to vote?
Exhibit B, it's the, uh, that's the third page of Exhibit B.
A.
B is a. In the middle.
I think this is, I think this is.
So the, as I understand this, the intent of this is to establish a, a standard to measure the, the number of boats one can have for development, based on frontage on the lake.
For an outlet situation.
Right.
So it's the developer that will make the proposal to, to get more boats?
Right.
Okay. I thought if some person wanted two boats, they'd have to come before the.
So the language, the language we approved was an applicant may propose up to two boats per a hundred lineal, lineal feet of riparian shoreline, with the understanding the applicant shall have the burden of demonstrating the reasonableness of any authorization in excess of one boat per a hundred feet. That is what we approved, correct?
So I would just add, you approved a motion to include the standard of two boats per a hundred lineal feet. This language was not included in your packet. This language was what was drafted to meet the requirements of your motion, and this is what was provided to the board. So, so the board's asking, do you like this language, do you wanna go with this language, or do you want us to return to the original language from the ordinance before it was amended?
I was reading the one in blue.
Yes, that's the one that went to the board of trustees, that's never been before the planning commission.
Got you, okay.
Hey, can you clarify? Exhibit, Exhibit B, clarify, what, what is Exhibit B?
So Exhibit B are the changes that went to the, that we were showing the board, the changes that were made between when it was last before the board of trustees, because it went to the board of trustees before it ever went to the planning commission, to see if they were interested in amending the ordinance. Then it went to the planning commission, and then several changes were made. Um, and then this change was the final change made before it went to the board, so it was showing everything that changed between when this ordinance was last before the board and when it was presented last week.
This is, this would've been the version that the township board would've discussed, correct?
Correct.
All right, so B is now, presumed limitation shall be one boat per a hundred feet, but can be modified by the planning commission. The applicant has the burden of demonstrating reasonableness. Is that, is that accurate?
That's accurate, that's the, this is the language that the board of trustees is asking if the planning commission believes it accomplishes the purpose that the planning commission was trying to accomplish when it approved the motion, requesting that the language be added regarding the two boats up, you know, two boats per a hundred feet of shoreline.
I mean, in theory, I guess, it, it does accomplish the same thing, unless I'm missing something, other than I think two is a little confusing, because it, it says the number of boats may be reduced below one per one hundred, but it should be one per fifty, right, because 'cause we're allowing.
It's essentially saying that by right, the, the way I would word it, or explain it, I should say, by right, you can do one per hundred, but you can do two per hundred if the applicant meets the burden of demonstrating the reasonableness of it. As, as approved by the planning commission.
But number two is giving us the right to say, no, you can't have any boats.
That's if it's, if there is public access.
Yeah.
Or private easement.
So it's really giving a lot of discretion to the planning commission, a lot. And if it's a special use site, you know? I'm fine with it.
B.
You're fine with B?
I'm fine with B. As presented. It's, it's an awful lot of discretion, but again, we're recommending body, if the township board feels like it's too much discretion, they'll change it. That's their job.
I have a question for Brittany.
Yeah.
Does this language in any way put us, uh, open to exposure as compared to private landowners? You know, um, that this limitation to what a private, single family home can do, and what the, what a multifamily or an outlet can do, seems like we're limiting a lot more than a private, single family home. And it just seems like this is just begging for it to be challenged. Do you see it that way?
So what this ordinance does is it prohibits access by multiple people who are, don't have a property interest in a single family riparian property on a lake. However, the section we're discussing allows backlot access as a special land use. So based on recent Supreme Court opinions, other ordinances we've seen, the challenges we've seen over the past few years, we don't necessar, our office doesn't necessarily have a legal issue with the provisions of this ordinance.
Thank you.
So just one last point of clarification with Ms. Ellis, so I'm fine with C, C one. C two, does C one apply to C two? 'Cause it's basically saying it's may reduce below one per one hundred, but does the planning commission have purview to allow on a public access? There's public asset, access or private easement access. If we feel it, it makes sense to go to one per fifty, do we still have that ability?
In my opinion, this gives the planning commission the authority to approve, yes, the planning, the planning commission would have that discretion under this ordinance as drafted. Um, I believe what number, number two does is it restricts the planning commission from, for example, allowing for zero boats where section one would apply, so two is really restriction on one, one's not a restriction on two.
I was with you for most of that.
Order speak.
There's, there's gonna be a quiz on this after.
Yeah, so my point is, is that this section gives the planning commission great discretion to approve up to two boats, um, for the hundred lineal feet, and then it also gives the planning commission discretion if there's public access or private access easement, um, to reduce the boats to below one boat. But I, I don't believe that it would prevent the planning commission from allowing for a greater number of boats if the conditions in section two apply, and it's, and the planning commission determines within its discretion that it makes sense and it's reasonable.
Yeah, and the, I, I agree, the only confusing part about this is I think we have the discretion to do less than one per fifty or one per hundred anyway, so I did, I never understood the reason for that language, but again, I'm not gonna die in the hell, so. If she, she's fine with what I.
But the la, the latter part of C one also makes it sound like we can approve more than two per hundred. If they, um, have a burden of demonstrating res, um, it, it, it sounds like it's a, it's, it sounds like.
It's two per hundred, I think.
It's up to zero.
But then it says an authorization in excess of one boat per a hundred feet. Two is more than one, three is more than one, four is more than one.
But it says may propose up to two boats per hundred. I don't know if it changes that.
But this is a relatively rare thing to happen, because most, most boats will be grandfathered
Correct.
in, in all township lakes. I mean, I don't know if other township lakes are as populated as Deer Lake.
Well, as long as someone, as long as our consultants know what this means to give us a recommendation, then I guess I'm okay with it.
So final clarification, was there any other language that was changed from when we approved it?
No, no other language was changed, that was the only change.
I'm good with it.
Again, it's, it's a lot of discretion for the planning commission, as a planning commission member, it's great. As long as the township board's okay with it, then I'm okay with it. So, so in, uh, it sounds like, does anyone have any objections to, we'll, we'll hold on this, but just informally, the motion, sounds like, Ms. Ellis, the motion can specifically reference Exhibit B.
That would be appropriate.
Yeah.
Correct, I also have a motion just approving the ordinance as presented to the board of trustees, um, which was Exhibit B.
Any other questions or comments? Sounds like we're ready for clar, clarification mo, motion. I've got a headache, to be honest.
I'll make it. I move to recommend, I guess I have to say, PC file. PC file twenty-two, twenty-two dash zero zero eight, on, on a text amendment, revisions to section eleven point eight, oh, eight lake access regulations. Return from township board, um, approving the language that was presented to the board on the August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two meeting, um, with the lane, um, the appropriate motion being, I move to recommend approval of the amendments to section eleven point eight of the township's ordinance as presented at the August twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two board of trustees meeting.
I guess I'd like it to say, per Exhibit B.
Okay.
Per Exhibit B.
Support.
Discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Borzma?
Yes.
Mr. Galli?
Yes.
Mr. Lachrin?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Chairman Savada?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Back to the board.
And there again, like I say, I, I guess I wanna apologize, I, I wasn't trying to make a mess of it, but it just sounded like it wasn't what we made the motion out of, in my recollection, so I just wanted to.
Had to look at it about five times, but.
Okay.
Now that it was, now that we discussed it and got input from Ms. Ellis and we vetted it, I can see where you're coming from. That was a lot more clear after we talked about it this evening than, than when I read the agenda at home, so. I see where you're coming from now.
Okay.
Next item is, uh, item H, approval of minutes. H one is, uh, minutes for the regular meeting of August eleventh, twenty-twenty-two. Is there a motion to move these forward? I move, I move we, uh, approve the minutes as presented.
Support.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, anyone, uh, opposed? Any abstentions?
Yeah, I was not there.
So is that an abstention?
What's that mean?
Are, did you, did you vote, did you say aye?
No, I didn't say anything.
Are you abstaining then?
Yes.
Okay.
But I think there's someone else that was.
You, you don't have to abstain, you can still approve.
He read the minutes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So let the record show, Ms. Tully abstained, so it's a six to, six zero one vote, one abstention. Um, item I is the consultant report, uh, master plan update, Mr. Carlisle.
Yeah, we have a written report for you, I'll just, you know, sort of summarize it, and also I wanna throw something out there. You know, we have, you know, things always seem to slow down a little bit when their elections occur, for a whole variety of reasons, Mr. Ritchie's probably aware of that, having, having been through a few of these things. But we have been, uh, you know, moving forward with some of the, uh, public participation. As you know, the survey's been up and posted, I think Brian has well over four hundred responses to this. We wanna ask you to encourage people, again, encourage people to respond to the survey, uh, but I think, uh, you know, we are starting to accumulate results. Uh, Brian, is there anything you wanna say about that?
Well, yeah, I just wanna, this is a dashboard that I put together, um, basically to assert this. The pertinent questions I thought of the survey, um, it's, it's very comprehensive, it goes through, um, a number of tabs on the bottom, but, uh, this is just the overview tab, so we've had four hundred and ten responses, fifteen outside the township, 'cause that's the first question of the survey. Um, and you can see geographically on the map where they're coming from, which is pretty much everywhere. So, um, you know, it's, it looks pretty cluttered, because that's all, you know, pretty much any time somebody answered the survey, it grabbed their location. And they could choose to say no, which was only a handful that chose no on their browser when they did this, or on their phone. So, um, you can see length of residency, there's, there's a lot that, uh, you know, forty-two percent or twenty-one years and over. Um, basic age of who answered the survey, uh, it's pretty well distributed. The educational status, I thought was interesting, a majority of people have some sort of either bachelor's degree or higher, which is, is in, you know, we pretty much know that as part of our demographics in the township anyway. The second tab is just overall sentiment, and this was two of the questions that were very open-ended. So, um, what do you like most about the township, the community character, obviously, number one. What do you not like about the township, condition of the roads, I assume they, they're talking about, uh, their neighborhood roads, 'cause, you know, we've done the road village by now, so the main roads are, are good. And then also, traffic seemed to be a big issue. And anybody, especially how schools in session, you see what traffic's really like, so. The third tab is grownup into basically live, so that was just a catchphrase I used for the residential questions. The housing types, uh, where they, you know, what type of lot do they live in, uh, most people are coming from less than an acre. Uh, most people are coming from less than an acre who answered the survey. Um, should they, should the township provide more housing for young families? Uh, you know, that appeared to be important. Um, housing for seniors, uh, somewhat was, you know, more, more, you know, 50/50 on, you know, somewhat important. Um, protect against sprawl, this, uh, when the survey first went up, this was like, nope. It was almost 100% no, you know, to protect against sprawl, it was very important. Now it's kind of evened out. So, um, and then provide more affordable housing, um, not necessarily important. So, um, the next tab is work, so this is more business-related questions. Uh, job creation, economic development, it's important. Um, encourage commercial development. And again, this was, went along with the sprawl question. People were, you, what I found in the survey results is people were against development or thought we had too much development, yet they want more restaurants, family amusement, you know, so it's, it's always this dichotomy of, of what goes on.
Was sprawl defined?
No. No, I think people just assume it's that catchphrase that everybody knows it to be, you know.
We're, I mean, look, I live here, I, I love this community, but by definition, we're sprawl. I mean, we.
Well, yeah, you look at it from a more regional setting.
Yeah, I mean, we're suburban, almost ex-urban, and we're the reason that I-75 is widened anyways. Philosophical.
We are urban.
We're urban. We're urban. I trademarked that, I should have anyways.
You did.
You're a stoner.
Which side is 75 you're on?
Yeah, that's true.
Well, you see here, uh, what types of non-residential that the township could use more of, restaurants. And, you know, family amusement, that was kind of a generic term too. I mean, that wasn't really defined. But, um, uh, people really aren't interested in more industrial development, uh, commercial, you know, redevelop underutilized properties commercially, yes. You know, people want to see that. So, um, then I put two tabs at the, at the bottom here together for recreation and parks and rec type questions. Um, these are all recreational-based, so, um, do we have the right number of parks? Um, people seem to think so, but people want more multi-use pathways, you know, safety paths. Um, so, you know, the, these were, these were given right to Derek, our Parks and Rec director, which has, has another survey actually. But this is just our, you know, people's satisfaction with all the parks that we have. So, um, this updates, you know, this updates live, so, um, when somebody answers this, the numbers change and it all populates. So I'm going to be posting this on the website so people can see kind of what, what's going on and where we're at. But 410 results is huge. Uh, Parks and Rec Department put this on their, their Facebook and it just lit up. I mean, we had probably 250 results and a couple days, so.
Well, I, I think what's, one of the things that's pretty significant, if you go back and you look at the, Brian, go back to one of the, just, yeah, the, the geographic array of answers. It's, it's spread from all over the township, which is, I think, encouraging.
Yeah.
That we're getting that kind of distribution, at least geographically, of responses. So I think that there's some significance, uh, to that. Uh, in that vein, you know, we have conducted two focus groups and similar types of, of input. You know, we had a focus group with seniors and, uh, it was the same thing, we need more services, but we want less growth. And then young families said, basically, it was a little bit different. We want, you know, there's certain more family-related activities that we want to see occur in this township, more things for people to do and things of that nature. Those summaries of those two focus groups were attached to and included with your, the memo here. Uh, we've also done a short video, uh, which is just a real quick Q and A type of thing. We actually did that today. I think it turned out very well. Uh, that will go on the website, there certainly, or that will actually be broadcast. Um, there's certainly more opportunities to do that. It's, uh, you know, community access channel is a great opportunity, you know, to, to get information out. So, uh, it, so again, in that vein, um, we are now wanting to kick this whole effort up to another level here and now where we need to actively involve the planning commission in helping us plan future public participation. Now, it may be, uh, maybe one large event, it may be a couple smaller events, that's going to really be, we want to have you help us design that particular approach moving forward because all this information is going to be coming back to you. And I think moving forward, if, when we start having larger workshops, we're going to need your help and your participation as we have done in the past, but not recently, you know. Uh, the last master plan update was in 2016, and the commission at that point in time really felt there was not the need for a lot of changes to the plan, so we didn't have a lot of, you know, we, we had, you know, a workshop or two, but it wasn't extensive. Uh, so to, you know, to that end, we're asking if we can have a special meeting with the planning commission where, you know, the specific scope of that is really for your, for you to help us design the balance of the public participation and, uh, identify areas where you can participate and assist in that, in that whole effort. Uh, we've thrown out a date of, uh, where was it, Brian? Special meeting? I guess we didn't, didn't suggest a special meeting, did we?
We didn't pick a specific date, sorry. It would be the 27th.
Yeah, I think we, we were proposing two weeks from today for a special planning commission workshop on this.
Or the 29th.
Or the 29th, either, either one.
I know, I'm out on the 22nd.
Order trustees is calling a special meeting to replace the, uh, treasurer, just make sure we don't pick the same day.
Yeah, I think that might have been the 29th, I think.
Yeah, what, is it 20, 20, what's the date you picked, 28?
22nd.
22nd.
For the, for the following Thursday, it's 29th, but I suspect you're right, Ron. I think there's.
I think it was the 27th and 29th was what we picked as our two dates, so.
Does it have to be a Thursday?
Nope. No, it doesn't.
I'm just, I'm gone that whole week, but if everybody else is here, it is what it is. I've got my, my July night meetings, Mondays and Tuesdays. Don't lie around me, but I'm just throwing it out there.
Either works for me.
The 26th, they got the public accuracy going on in this room, so can't do it that night.
Um, another option, but it would mean you would have two, it means you would have two, uh, planning commission meetings in successive weeks would be October 6th still.
You can do Wednesday, the 28th.
Okay.
6 works for me, 28 works for me.
Yeah, 29.
28th?
29.
I can do the 28th.
The 28th?
22nd, yeah, 22nd doesn't work either.
28th? That's what we're talking about now. That's if you're seeing that. Okay. Okay.
What day is the weekday?
That's a Wednesday, 28th.
Okay, for sure.
It shouldn't be a long meeting.
Would that be regular meeting time?
Carry, block out those two dates, the 27th, 29th, are they?
Yeah, they are.
Yeah, so we will plan that on the 28th. Sorry, Ron, you might be.
Be here every day.
6:30 work for you?
Not if you make a decision on the 27th.
You're thinking 6:30, regular time?
Are we going to have food?
Yeah.
Is there going to be any food?
Food? We can, we can probably figure something out, yeah.
Well, I'm only asking because for me to get here at 6:30, I don't have time to stop and eat anything, so.
Well, you could miss me.
We'll bring you a bag, we'll bring you a bag lunch.
I don't have time to stop and fast food, unless I'm eating it here, so, which wouldn't be good.
Okay, uh, well, very good. Um, I think that's going to sort of, once we have that meeting, that's going to determine the balance of the schedule. Uh, because once, I mean, I think we're a little reluctant to get into starting devising and discussing the goals and, you know, the, the revision of the goals and objectives with you until you get all the public input, you know, at least the majority of it before you and have a sense of what the public is thinking. Uh, and that's, I think that's kind of why when, you know, after the public participation is really, we've gotten, gotten through the bulk of it, then we start hitting the real, you know, detailed elements of the plan. Um, hit the, the elements in more detail, uh, when you have complete information, is what I'm trying to say.
So, a couple things. One, Brian, presentation's fantastic, nice job. Um, census data, the demographic data is not going to be released for almost a year. It's, uh.
More than, actually.
Yeah, so.
We're just using estimated data.
Yeah.
I mean, the best we can get, you know, from SEMCOG and.
Yeah. We'll do our best.
Community profile has not as much as been released.
Yeah.
It's all estimates, except for the R.
I mean, I think the good news is, is that, you know, we're not a community that has, that radically changes for any reason, you know? So I, I think that information is, is really reasonably accurate, that, that's, that comes out of SEMCOG, which is, you know, projections out from census data, so I'm pretty comfortable with that data.
It's frustrating because our data's, our, our census data's so old, you know, it's, it'd be nice to update it, but it is what it is. We'll get through it.
Yeah, I, I attended a, a session at the Esri user conference in July on the census, and because the federal government pushed for the redistricting, that pushed the ACS data multi-years back, 2024 they're talking about.
Yeah.
Before it's even out.
Which, it's almost outdated by the time the next.
It's outdated by then, it's a four-year-old.
Yeah.
Maybe they could have the IRS workers.
I'm going to gavel you if you keep going down that road.
Can I ask a favor? Can you send out a link to the survey as a reminder for us to share it?
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, you created a QR.
Yep, I had a QR code, so yeah, I can send that out.
Can you send a nice flyer to us? I was going to say, just because I have a dinner with like 23 families on Monday, I think, and I could show it all down there.
We'll get stickers made for the side of your car, Dave.
Oh, I was just going to put it.
The QR code.
I was just going to put it on my neighborhood thing and the village thing and all the different, the Rotary and all the stuff that I'm involved with.
I was going to say, we got our different clubs in there, Rotary, Optimus, Nolans, I don't know if we're, uh, could do like a quick presentation to each one of those and just leave information in that way, maybe that, get their members to participate in the, uh, in the, uh, survey as well.
Good idea.
This was also done, this was also posted, the survey, the QR was posted on ITV, so I'm sure we got several hits from that too, people are watching.
Okay.
Yeah, on a, on a different subject, um, I think it's, uh, what we want to report to the commission is that, uh, both Brian and I, and Jason, we're not in the meeting yet, we're in the meeting today, right? Okay. Uh, we have met with, uh, the, uh, both, uh, part, both portions of the commercial development of Walden Village, the grocery, and now, and also, uh, the, the balance of the pro, the property on the west side of New Walden Center Drive. Uh, so consequently, uh, those projects are moving along. Uh, after we have a, another meeting, I believe, with the, uh, the grocery proposal, we are going to, uh, recommend that a consolidated plan be submitted and that we have a, uh, subcommittee meeting on it. So this is starting to move, it's going to start moving fairly rapidly from here on forward. Um, the second thing is, uh, we, uh, the CIA board will be meeting, uh, to hopefully approve a proposal from, you know, Noack and Fraus, a proposal that I've yet to receive, but it's, and it's in the works, uh, for the new light here at Walden Center Drive, Walden and Walden Center Drive. Uh, very exciting things moving forward and, uh.
Yeah, I mean, we've, we do have, we've, we've kind of, we've been working with Jim Epic, um, and his firm, the, the board authorized us to, uh, spend some money, I think it was last year, the year before, um, to explore, uh, creating a gathering space, so to speak, on the property that's just north of the building. And so we've been working with Noack and Fraus and Jim Epic has come up with a very, very cool plan that we're going to refine, and I think, you know, we'll have a couple more meetings to talk about it, and then, um, we'll, we'll be able to give a presentation to both, the planning commission should see it and also the township board ultimately, and we'll have a better idea of, number one, what it's going to cost, and two, how do we create a funding mechanism, you know, for donations?
And the goal was a multi, multi-season, multi-generation.
Yeah.
Park.
Yeah, and, and the cool thing is, it's going to tie right directly into Walden Village development, you know, because all the crossings are going to go, you know, at this corner, and, uh, and, and so therefore it'll be part of the synergy of activity that we will be trying to create, uh, in this particular area. It'll, it'll, it'll really be a, I think, a very cool place once we put this all together.
Very cool. Anything else for consultant reports? Item G, discussion, anyone want to discuss anything? You, you mentioned, uh, parks and recreation. I've been, I try to bike every, every night after work, and, uh, boy, the safety pass in the township, combined with the gravel, the gravel roads and the parks, it's a biker's paradise. Anyone who's, who lives here and doesn't have a bike, get a bike and get out, it's, it's a lot of fun. That's my pitch.
I bet you're going the other way with that.
No, I, I, it's, it's fantastic, and I, I mean, I, I know how costly it is per foot to build these things. Um, there was a project on Clintonville, the, the boardwalk that was constructed, I know that was very expensive. It's fantastic, and, um, it's, uh, it's money well spent. I support the efforts of the township board, let's keep going. It's awesome, so. Anyone that doesn't have a bike and doesn't bike, I get out there, it's a lot of fun.
I had a friend who was really into it, and I was amazed how many places you can cross connect that you'd never even think of, and he's like, oh yeah, let's go this way. I'm like, how? And he's.
Yep.
Go all the way up to Ascot.
Yep, it's amazing.
Did you ever see that boardwalk over there on Pain Creek Trail?
Yeah, the one, it's fairly steep.
Quarter mile off.
Yeah, it's, it's awesome. I can't imagine how much that costs. Any other discussion? Uh, item K is the German, I mo, I make a motion, we adjourn?
Support.
All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, or adjourn.